2019 Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Brother Michael Cothran. Michael is the pastor at the Kelly's Creek Baptist Church. And our pledge allegiance will be given by his daughter, Lakin Cothran. Lakin is a second grader at Blanch. She's seven years old and today is her birthday. She attends Kelly's Creek Baptist Church. She enjoys gymnastics and playing with her two sisters. And she's the daughter of Michael and Bree Cothran. If you would, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Father, Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord, the opportunity to come here tonight, Lord, for these men and women coming to meet and to help lead our county, Lord, that we are so thankful to have, and, Lord, that you've blessed us with. We pray a special blessing over them tonight, Lord, for wisdom and knowledge, Lord, in what they have planned. Lord, also for what is in the future, and, Lord, a vision for where this county will be, and, Lord, this county in our state. Lord, we just pray that you watch over them and you protect them here tonight. Lord, we pray that you will, Lord, be a blessing to this county, Lord, and help us to be lights in this county, Lord. It'll be one that stands out. Lord, we love you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, if you would, answer roll call electronically.
I have twenty-one present, four absent.
Twenty-one present, okay. My only announcement tonight is it gives me great pleasure to introduce my county mayor of the day, Jacob Smith. Now, this is the second year for Jacob's grandfather to buy him this privilege. Each year at RCA, they have an auction to raise money, and Jacob's granddaddy has bought him that privilege, which benefits the school. And I tell you what, I kinda like him being with me. Sometimes he has to do my dirty work, but he's a believer in Bill Newman, so I kinda like that about him. And I would give him the microphone, but we got a lot of business to do tonight, so, Jacob, we might have to do that next month. How would that be?
Okay.
Okay. I like your attitude.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Jacob. Alrighty, our next, we have two minutes that we need to approve. If it so suits the commission, I would entertain a motion for both of those approval at this time.
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Bradford makes that. Commissioner Douglas seconds it. Any questions on those two minutes, two meeting minutes that were in your packet? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received sixteen monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. The next item, and I apologize to this commission and Darren Holland and Chris Thornton, because I messed up last month when we supposedly elected a new representative from the eighth district. Commissioner Cunningham tried to correct me, but I wouldn't listen to him. And so, we need to correct the mess that I made, because we needed twelve votes, and we got eleven for Darren Holland and eight for Chris Thornton. So, we need to, I'm gonna ask our attorney, Ed Sims, to address what we need to do now to correct that.
Thank you, Mayor. This, all the procedure to fill a vacancy is set out in the Tennessee code. Of course, the county commission is an arm of the state, and we have to follow state law in filling our vacancies. And it's in TCA 5-5-111. And I won't go through all the steps. I could, if you'd like for me to, but it's a little laborious. And we did real good until we got down, after nomination ceased, we had three candidates, and they were voted on, and we dropped the low voter, the one with the lowest vote, and that's all according to our procedure. And then it got down to a vote between Mr. Holland and Mr. Thornton. And as the mayor has indicated, Mr. Holland got eleven, and Mr. Thornton got eight. But as you recall, we have, of course, twenty-four members. Mr. Jackson's resigned, so that gets us to twenty-three, so we need, for a majority, we need twelve votes. And the statute very clearly says, you know, to fill a vacancy, we gotta have a majority of the body, not a majority of the quorum. So, that's what we're looking for tonight. We need, and I'm gonna recommend, that you just revoke the Thornton-Holland nominations, and see whether or not that one of these parties can get twelve to fill this vacancy properly. I called CTAAS, and I hope there was, I was hoping there was a shortcut here, but there's really not. Three of them, three of the lawyers got involved, and they all said, you gotta revoke. You gotta have a majority. That's pretty basic. We can't, we can't have a commission member with just a majority of the quorum. So, I'd recommend to this body that they do have a revoke on Mr., either Mr. Holland or Mr. Thornton.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote at this time.
Commissioner Graham?
Holland.
Sanders?
Holland.
Walker?
Holland.
Brown?
Thorpe.
Holland.
Ashley?
Holland.
Guin?
Holland.
Mitchell?
Holland.
Bradford?
Holland.
Spray?
Holland.
Britt?
Holland.
Dangerfield?
Taylor?
Holland.
Cunningham?
Dorn.
Bryant?
Holland.
Douglas?
Holland.
Guntherberg?
Thorpe.
Holland.
Ogle?
Holland.
Have sixteen for Mr. Holland, four for Mr. Thornton.
Okay. All right, Darren, let's do it again. Gotta be sworn in again. Let me sneak by ya. Get back. Congratulations. Okay, repeat after me. I, Darren Holland.
I, Darren Holland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity to duties.
With fidelity to duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions.
To support the constitutions.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the county commissioner.
Of the county commissioner.
Representing the eighth district.
Representing the eighth district.
Of Lincoln County, Tennessee.
Of Lincoln County, Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And this day, the sixteenth day of July, congratulations, you are now representative of the eighth district.
Thanks, sir.
I'll get this filled out for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our, at this time, there's been a request for adjustment of the agenda, and I would recognize Commissioner Sanders.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, could I recognize the concerns, concerned citizens of Taft, please?
Okay, is there any objection from the commission for us moving to new business at this point in our agenda? Because it would be a change in the agenda, and it normally would require a motion for that. Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Walker, any discussion on changing the agenda to move new business to now end the agenda? Everything else would fall into according to the way it's been set out. All those in favor of changing the agenda to reflect that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, I recognize Commissioner Sanders for...
We have a representative from Taft to speak tonight.
My name is Lori Beth Howard. I live at 22 Molly Lane, Taft, Tennessee, 38488.
Okay, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of a group of Lincoln County residents that feel ignored and unprotected. To recap, at the June Commissioners Meeting, we asked this body to create a committee to conduct a thorough review. The goal was to understand any negative impacts that the commercial poultry operation at 1199 Old Railroad Bed Road could have on our drinking water supply. We learned you sought guidance with a team of legal experts at the County Technical Assistance Service after that meeting. We have questions regarding the outcome of that collaboration. What was their guidance to you regarding the special impact district? What is the status of our request for a committee? And how are you planning to follow up with us? Confident that simply waiting for answers was not our only alternative, we became proactive. We rallied the community and conducted our own review. Here is the outcome of those efforts. Our petition to protect our water has soared to over 2,000 signatures. We rallied to sign and send over 1,400 letters. It is so clear that there is a majority of our community speaking to you. When we elected you all into office, we trusted you to speak on behalf of us. Commissioner Graham and Commissioner Sanders, will you honor your duty and advocate for our collective voices? Our efforts have also shed new light on the vulnerability of the water resource in Taft that serves over 20,000 residents. This is a version of the latest wellhead protection map that is on file with the state. What is most alarming to us is that ten public utility wellheads on the west side of Old Railroad Bed have been left out of the protection area on this map of record. Is it a coincidence that the ten unreported wellheads are directly adjacent to the location of the planned commercial poultry operation? And if so, how is this acceptable? Each pin on this map shows that there is an afforded protection for each wellhead under the Safe Drinking Water Act. At a minimum, each wellhead is required to receive a fixed amount of protected area according to the Tennessee statute. Had these wellheads been accurately reported to the state and documented on this map eight years ago, would we even need to have this conversation? It's not only the wellhead protection map errors. We found a long list of issues that raise red flags regarding the quantity and the quality management of our water system. Lincoln County Board of Public Utility keeps nine of the seventeen wells offline due to lack of funding, despite having the technology to bring them online. The utility operates beyond the state-defined maximum capacity with no scheduled allocation of an additional water resource. During the mid-June sanitary survey, the Tennessee Division of Water found a slew of delinquencies and infractions of state-mandated requirements. This illustrates how stressed the Lincoln County Board of Public Utility has become in this area. Missing state-required deadlines for the Consumer Confidence Report was due this month. Missed emergency management plan updates and filing deadlines were due in 2017. Equipment maintenance infractions, a hole on the top of the Taft finished storage well tank, finished clearwell inspections have never been conducted, noncompliant biological sampling, thirty-seven percent ongoing water loss in the Taft wellfield area, and an eight-year delinquency in filing the updated wellhead protection plan. Updates for this plan are required every three years. Now imagine trying to recover from a crippling water contamination event from a Tyson-backed poultry operation positioned right in the middle of these wellheads. If Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities is unable to meet their current obligations, why would we have the confidence that they would be able to manage a crisis? The county leadership must honor our collective voices and evaluate the risk of contamination from this Tyson-backed operation. It will consume an obscene amount of water and generate tonnage of litter, which is consistently linked to crippling water contamination events. With only eight wells active to serve over 20,000 residents and an ongoing thirty-seven percent water loss, isn't there anyone here tonight that recognizes this is a risk? Who is up to the task to provide the utmost protection for the Taft public drinking water resource? It is under a great threat. Mayor Newman, you have the care and custody of all county property. These wellheads and their protection are under your wing. This local government has the resources of an expert legal team through the County Technical Assistance Services. How will you utilize their expert guidance? Will it be used to support your constituents and honor our voices? Or will it be used to oppress us and block us from questioning what is rightfully ours, the protection of our safe drinking water? We formally request a written response from your office informing the residents of Lincoln County how going forward you plan to protect our drinking water resource and recharge areas from any negative impacts that may come from this Tyson-backed commercial poultry operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there, is there others from your group that are willing to address them?
We did have, we just wanted to emphasize, we have 145 signs that are up in our community, and it's just more example of the overwhelming collective voice that we just want to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When was the last time the wellhead protection plan updated?
From what we have learned, it was 2011. And we were actually, we requested, in the CCR, 2018 CCR report, it says that the plan is available for community review. And we requested that from Chris Mers, and he denied our request. So, we went to the state level, and we asked, and that's how we obtained the map, and to date, no one has provided the wellhead protection plan to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And part, and we, we haven't been sitting on our thumbs on, you know, on finding out, and tonight, there are people here from Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to address some of your questions tonight. And David, you want to recognize, I'm...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I recognize representatives from TDEC?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Nancy Glass, are you going to address the commission first?
Sherry Glass.
Sherry, excuse me.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm Sherry Glass. I work with the Division of Water Resources, which is a division within the Department of Environment and Conservation. So, we regulate public drinking water sources. Lincoln County is one of the counties where we have coverage. So, the speaker before mentioned a lot of, a lot of issues. I'm not sure which to address first, but I think one thing that we need to look at is the potential for crisis or contamination. Based on the information that we have, the way these operations work, there's very little potential for contamination. And someone else might want to, to speak to that more in depth. Which specific question would you like to address first? I think maybe I could speak to the sanitary survey issue, since my office is the one that conducts those inspections. It's, the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities' number-one water system scored a ninety-seven percent on their most recent sanitary survey, which was conducted in June of this year. It's not uncommon to find deficiencies during these sanitary surveys, and when we find these deficiencies, we request that systems follow up on these issues, which is what we did during the most recent sanitary survey, and requested that some of these things be done within timeframes. One of those that we've asked the system to do is the wellhead protection plan or the source protection plan update, and we've given a compliance date of September 1st to try to have that back, back into us. So, while there were deficiencies, there weren't any egregious deficiencies that would require enforcement action on our part. And I don't know if that helps explain those issues a little bit more.
Okay.
Fine, do you want to speak to the source water protection plan a little bit?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Brian Hamm with TDEC, Division of Water Resources. I'm the program coordinator for source water protection. As the previous speaker mentioned, there were deficiencies within the, the wellhead protection plan as far as not having been submitted within, within the required timeframe. She noted on the most recent sanitary survey that, as part of that letter response, we did set a September 1st deadline for requiring a new wellhead protection plan to be put into place. Just to describe the source water protection program a little bit more and how wellhead protection areas are established, there are, around each well, this, your system, as she mentioned, serves over 20,000 people, so that's a category four public water system. So, there are defined radiuses around each well that have a wellhead protection zone, and that is 750 feet around each wellhead for category four public water systems. Beyond that, then they go on and establish an area that actually recharges that whole group of wells within an area, and that's the Zone B, and that's categorized as a wellhead management area. The purpose of that area is for them to evaluate potential contaminated, potential contaminant sources within the area. And these are, very often, we'll see gas stations or, you know, agricultural facilities, many other different things that might have, whether they have chemical storage or whether it's some other type of practice, where they're trying to establish an inventory of sites that they just kind of keep an eye on, and they update this annually every year. They go out and, and make sure that they're, that they have all these sites within their inventory. And it's not uncommon to have these, all these different types of sites, like I was mentioning, underground storage tanks, you might have dry cleaning facilities, other types of facilities that might have chemical storage on site or some other potential for contamination. And really what we have is, after we identified that, that there were those deficiencies, we outlined that deadline for them to submit the new wellhead protection plan. So, if there are any other questions about the, the program or how that's technically evaluated, I'd be glad to answer those.
Does this proposed facility fall within that protected area?
From initially evaluating it, and so, they, they actually established that area and submit it to us, and we evaluate and make sure that it is. It looks like from the distribution of wells that with the new submittal, it will be within that area of the Zone 2, the wellhead management zone.
Right, like a gas station.
Yeah, not the wellhead protection zone that's 750, but the wellhead management zone.
Okay.
It's a little preliminary to say, just because I haven't looked at and evaluated a plan that's been submitted for them yet, but, but the recharge area, actually, it looks like most of the recharge for those wells actually occurs from the north and from the west, and that this actual facility drains more towards the west, towards limestone branch, I believe it is. But again, that's something that they, they prepare as an engineering design, and then we evaluate that.
Okay.
So, it's a little preliminary for me to say, but...
Okay, thank you.
Brian, are y'all assessing it without that, apparently we've got ten wells, according to the lady, that are not on that map. Are y'all aware of those wells? Obviously you are now, but is that part of your evaluation or, because that might stretch that Zone...
Exactly, and that's what I was referring to, that, that I was kind of guessing that it, you know, could potentially be within that Zone 2 of the wellhead management zone. We are aware of the, the newer wells that have come online. They just weren't, as she referenced, part of that wellhead management plan that was submitted in 2011.
Any questions by any of the commissioners?
One of the letters that I received said that the amount of water that would be needed is 2.2 million gallons per water, but only eight active wells. Is that going, that's not sustainable, is it? And also, why does it affect to the houses? Is that sustainable?
That's not something that I'd be technically prepared to answer. Those sorts of estimates are done by the public water systems to make sure that they have enough water for their communities, so that's not something that I would be prepared to answer.
But they, they do have regulations to supply X number of PSI each pump. So, if they fail to love that, there are regulations to make sure there's enough water there. If they can't do that, then they'll have to...
I, I can address part of it, in that we did meet with Tyson, and this is, they have done, they have dug an agricultural well. There will be a reservoir there on the property that will be filled, that will, that the actual water will come out of. It will be filled from that well. The only time the public water would be used if that well failed to produce enough for them for the chicken drinking water. And there is, some water will be used for a cooling effect on their ventilation system. It's a minor part. But there's no water used for any of their cleaning operation. Everything that's done, it is a dry operation, and on the facility there, on that farm, there's never any of the manure out in the weather. It's never wet. It's either hauled away or undercover. They do not take responsibility for the manure once it leaves that farm, but Tyson's responsible and the farmer's responsible while it's there on the farm. But, got a question in the back?
I do. Can we, somebody tell you that they confirmed that the water that would be required for the cooling effect was, would be doubled, and it would be a tightening effect that would have to be used in any degree above ninety degrees? So, I don't feel like that's a small concern, because...
Well, that was on a yearly basis, because once, once the temperature, you're right, on a ninety-degree day, they will be using more water. But three-fourths of the year, they won't be using any of that water for cooling.
But it, it doubles. I mean, the Marshall, I mean, the three men that I spoke with, they showed...
Okay, but it's still, and I'm just quoting Tyson, I have no experience.
So, I'm concerned, like, is that conversation coming from them consistent? Because I had a talk with three of them, and they absolutely confirmed that, at ninety degrees and above, it would double the usage of the, of the water wall that they would need to cool the birds. And so, it goes from thirteen hundred gallons to three thousand a day for the amount of birds that are there.
I, I don't disagree with that number.
Mr. James.
Yes, Commissioner Brian.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I guess it gets down to what's, what's legal and what's not. I understand, I think I'm hearing you, in that 750-foot zone, you couldn't have an operation like this, but outside of that, as long as it's basically on the water system's radar, it is... But outside of that, as long as it's basically on the water system's radar, it is acceptable to put something in that area. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. We see these types of sites in a lot of the wellhead management zones across the state. If you think about Memphis and a lot of the aquifer, a lot of the aquifers over there in the public water systems, they're basically all on groundwater. And you can imagine the farming that goes on there, the same types of facilities that we see in those sort of wellhead management zones. And it really gets down into the potential for discharge. And I guess that's a little bit of a good segue into talking about kind of animal feeding operation regulations and so forth that also Brad can speak to. But if you have any other questions about source water, I'd be glad to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brad?
My name's Brad Harris. I'm the land-based manager with the Department of Environment Conservation. My unit works with the facilities that require permits as far as animal feeding operations or concentrated animal feeding operations. And under the current regulatory system, under the current laws that we have, the only facilities that require a permit are permits, are facilities that intend to discharge, or large facilities that have a liquid management system, like a very large dairy or a large swine operation, such that those type of systems. The current law also allows other facilities that are not mandated by law to have a, to have an operational permit, to get a permit voluntarily if they so choose. And we have quite a few facilities that choose to have a permit as part of their business program. The permit, when we issue a permit for a concentrated animal feeding operation, or an animal feeding operation that opts into the program, mainly consists of having a nutrient management plan. What the nutrient management plan does is it speaks to how much waste they're going to generate, how it's stored, and how it's utilized, as far as its land applied, or if it's exported and sold to other farmers, or that type of thing. From what I understand, this facility's got 60,000 birds. It would be, if you looked at the EPA chart, I mean, it would be a medium-sized animal feeding operation. It does not fall into population that the current law requires to be permitted to operate. The only permitting requirement for this facility would be under, would be during construction. It would be construction general permit for the construction activity to keep any sediment or anything influencing surface water, so. I'll be happy to try to respond to any questions.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
When was that law changed?
Last year, 2018.
Do you know what the rationale for changing that law was? And what was the law before?
The law before required most medium-sized facilities such as this, and any large facilities to have a concentrated animal feeding operation permit. The law originated, from what I understand, in the early 90s. The state legislature was concerned about animal feeding operations in Tennessee. And the program was modeled on what the EPA intended to do at the time, the program, you know, the program that the EPA was pushing. Tennessee kind of got ahead of the EPA, you know, our, we passed the program, put the program in place before the EPA was able to get their program in place. There was some different lawsuits and that type of thing. And so Tennessee's program wound up being a little bit more stringent than what the EPA's program is. And so the recent legislation last year, basically, well, it just limited it to any large, to only the facilities requiring a permit were, would be number one, were facilities that are required to have a permit by the EPA, which the EPA only requires facilities that have a discharge, or that intend to discharge to have a permit. The other category would be those facilities that have large liquid waste management. So that's the only two categories that are required to have a permit under the current rule. Prior to the current rules, prior to 2018, it was basically most mediums and all large facilities. So on poultry facilities, we had about 170-something prior to the legislation.
Was there a rationale in those conversations, though, of why, in all the litter, like, anything outside of what, where the West Rivers was, was there a rationale as to why that was removed? Did it have anything to do with the whole facility?
Not to my knowledge, no. It was, as part of the permitting requirements, there was quite a bit of record-keeping. When you get into nutrient management plans, it sounds pretty simple, know how much waste and where you're going to apply it. But when you get into soil sampling, and some of these facilities had application areas of thousands of acres, and trying to maintain the records of, just keep up with all of it, I think was kind of burdensome for some of the facilities, was the main thing that I heard during the process.
Have you worked on any other facilities that actually sit in a recharge involved, well-field area like ours, and then one that is also challenged like ours?
No, I haven't. Or not to my knowledge, let me clarify.
Not in your, not in your area?
Correct.
Anything from the commission? Okay, do we have anything, any, anything else y'all would like to add? Not?
I'll just say that as part of the permitting process, as part of the FO process, they wouldn't have been evaluating whether or not they were within it. There are also just source water protection areas for surface water intakes, and there are wellhead protection areas for the groundwater sources. And that wouldn't have been part of the permitting process that we would have gone through and to evaluate that. If you look at a map of the state, there are, it's covered in source water protection areas and wellhead protection areas. So there are a lot of, when they do these inventories for potential contaminant source, sources, you will see, especially over in the western part of the state where they're larger, you'll have a myriad of many different facilities within those areas. Just to put it in reference for you.
I have a question. If they violate the wellhead protection, if they have a misquote, and they contaminate the wells, are y'all in the enforcement department, fines, et cetera, et cetera? Of course, some damage is already done then, but.
Yeah, for any contamination of waters at the state, we have enforcement for it.
That's correct. And then, without the dollars, or whatever, takes you back right?
Yep, remedial action, penalties. That's correct.
Do you have another comment or question?
I have one more question.
Okay.
Are you, do you know, or do you have the knowledge of who is the agency or the entity that would evaluate in the criteria of, like, what you were just talking about? It's not part of TDEC's permitting process to evaluate the strength or vitality of the water systems underneath. Who is that body? Who would be the person?
Sure, sorry.
Sorry, Brian. You're fine.
So we're looking, we're talking about point source discharges to groundwater or surface water. For surface water, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System evaluates those types of discharges. Underground Injection Control evaluates discharges to groundwater within the state. I also manage that program. But, but when you talk about the difference in between point source, a point source discharge would be an actual injecting into a discrete point, like you've drilled a well, or you're injecting directly into a sinkhole. The types of things we're talking about here with nutrient management and application of manure on sites, that's not a point source discharge. So it's not part of the evaluation process for those types of operations.
All right, we're still in new business, so is there other new business for this commission meeting that we need to bring up at this time? Commissioner Cunningham?
Well, I didn't have any new business, but I did have a question. A lot of the letters that I have received, Mr. Chairman, talk about the special impact resolution that I know you are very familiar with. And would you explain why that?
Yes, sir. This occurred, and this goes back into the early 2000s. I remember when the former mayor, Ms. Bevilles, was a commissioner, and I, and I don't remember if she was the chairman of that committee, or I was, but we knew there was things that we were vulnerable to in our county. So we wanted to do something about that, and without doing countywide zoning, and we wanted to do an impact zoning. So at that time, Lawrence County already had one in place, and we adopted their impact zoning, Lawrence County's. I think nearly to the word. If there was anything changed in it, it had to do with agriculture, because we had to protect agriculture when we did the impact zoning, because we would have never got it passed otherwise. The night that it was passed, and Commissioner Cunningham, and Commissioner Graham, and Commissioner Ogle, and several others, I stood there for about an hour and read every word of it, and it passed. And that was challenged in court a few years later as being unconstitutional. And we, and y'all, the taxpayers of Lincoln County, paid over $400,000 to defend that case. It was upheld on appeal, and it still is in place as it was adequate for what we needed at the time. So the impact zoning, it has certain things in there that this commission could be brought to, and they could pass yes or no, those, however many it is, 13 or 14 entities in there. But it's only come up one time since I think it was passed, that one of those entities was voted down on that. Was there anything else, Commissioner Cunningham, that I need to cover?
It just doesn't apply to agriculture.
It does not apply to agriculture. That was one of the main points of it at the time. Any other new business for the commission tonight? Not, well, Commissioner Douglas?
There's several people here on the third item, Ms. Nancy Harris, and one of the.
Could move that.
All right, we're one of those spoken mouths, since we're here, new business, because all we're loaded up now.
Okay, everybody through with new business, we'll end that. One of the things we need to do, let's, let's go ahead and get moved to approve Commissioner Holland on those two. Is there any objection to that? And then we can move into that and release these people. That okay? That gets us to page two. Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion that Commissioner Darren Holland be appointed to the beer board for the unexpired term that John Jackson held, and also the unexpired term that John Jackson held on the road committee.
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Walker makes a motion. Commissioner Ogle seconds. Any questions or comments to those?
Take both items.
Yes, it is. All those in favor of those two approval committees, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Annually approved. Now we could move into, Ms. Harris, would you like to take up the, I think it's your number three item?
You're done, right, Mr. Mayor?
They are. Thank y'all.
You said number three?
I think that's the one that we have people here that, is that correct, Commissioner Douglas?
Wellsley Road.
Okay.
Oh, the rezoning, okay.
Rezoned.
This is a proposal for rezoning of property at Limestone and Wellsley Road. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the rezoning from A1 agriculture, forestry, rural residential to A2 suburban residential at their June 6th meeting. This commission called for this public hearing to be held tonight, which we did at 5:30. We do have some comments that I can read for you if you'd like, so it's part of the record. Is that a yes? Okay. In print, I received a comment from Ms. Celia Behringer McLachlan. Do you want me to read it, or just the gist of it?
You did just.
Just as she is opposed to it. I will say that she's, she's made some comments here that were incorrect, to say the least. And I did, I did email her back to correct it. One of the comments was that she would not be able to farm on her land if this was rezoned. That's not even part of it. Had another email from Nikki Graham in opposition of it. We, we did have a few during the public hearing in opposition as well. I do want to point out that the rezoning of this property, which is 16.61 acres, fronts onto Wellsley Road and Limestone Road. The primary difference of this request is the current zone, A1, is a minimum one acre tract. The proposed rezoning, A2, is a minimum 30,000 square foot, so it's a density change. The use, as far as being able to erect single-family dwellings, is already there in the A1. It's already a permitted use, so the use does not change. It's just the density. Nothing else changes. You can still farm, you can, around it, not in that A2, but around it.
Nancy, currently, then, what you're saying is, right now, if we don't do, if we don't change it, that you still be, how many acres?
Absolutely.
What acres?
Absolutely. He could build one house per acre.
It'll be a separate reason, but it'll just be one per acre.
I think, I mean, and it depends on how he does his lot layouts, but it's probably a difference of three, maybe four houses from A1 to A2.
Ms. Nancy, all right, you said 30,000, and that doesn't mean a lot to, maybe somebody watching on TV, but that's essentially three-fourths of an acre?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the difference between having one house per acre and one house on three-fourths of an acre.
Yes, sir. An acre is 43,560 square feet, as opposed to 30,000 square feet, A2.
And these are the guidelines that we, as a county, have set up?
Yes, sir.
For any and all people that would want to build something like this?
Yes, sir.
So if individuals meet those guidelines, under what conditions might we refuse that?
In this instance, I, he's met every criteria. It's not considered spot zoning, even though the surrounding property is A1. Spot zoning is generally one lot, one individual lot surrounded by another zone. Again, the A1 and A2, what the proposed use is residential, it is already approved in A1, so there's no adverse change in what the proposal is.
Other than three extra half?
Other than density, yes, sir. And I'm kind of speculating on three, because it's based on layout.
Has, has it been platted?
No, sir.
And parked?
No, sir.
That's not?
Most people don't do that ahead of time, until they find out that it is going to rezon because of the cost.
Okay, but that could be a limiting factor. Even if it's approved to change the zoning, if it did not perk?
Absolutely.
Okay, it still would be limited by that, okay?
Well, that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That seemed to be something that I heard from a lot of people, was they were afraid, and it came up at a commission meeting, that, you know, that lot wasn't big enough for that, for that area and that soil. But that's yet to be determined, so in the event that it didn't perk, then that would be, that would essentially stop a project, and it could go back to one acre.
That's considered preconceived fear, which doesn't stand up.
Commissioner Ogle?
Mr. Chairman, that, this project has already been approved as an A1. Mr. Chairman, that, this project has already been approved as an A1. That's not disputable. And I think the people that are here opposing it realize that. As far as we're not being able to change it, if we, if 13 of us...
Commissioner Ogle, will you use the mic, please?
You want me to start all over? But if 13 of commissioners can change this, that's the reason it's before us, is to say yes or no to it. That's exactly the reason, so we can say no if we so desire. And of course, when we talked about it in a budget committee meeting, we said, well, we might get sued. Well, we can get sued over anything. You can already look at that and see, we've been on beer board projects that we've got sued and, but nevertheless, it's here before the 20 commissioners that are sitting here. And if we say no to that, and it won't happen, it'll go back to the A1. It'll just stay, it won't go back to anything, it's already A1.
Right.
So, it can be, there can be 16 houses built there as it stands right now. If it, if we change it, it could be as many as 20 houses built there. I think we're setting a precedence in some of this stuff that we can't do anything. It's before us asking us to approve it. And because it's before us, we can deny it if we want to.
Can I comment to that?
You got the floor.
The answer, yes, sir, that is correct. However, I will caution you that if this body does deny, we need to have legitimate reasons as to why, other than constituents, or it just needs to be something that solidifies your decision.
You know, back 20 years ago, I used to, our partnership I was in, we used to build subdivisions. And back then, we had to perk and test everything. The soil had to be tested. The cost was on us before we did anything. It wouldn't even go before the planning commission, but if we, until we had that done. And I don't understand where that got changed along the way.
Still has to do that.
You still have to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. If it passes rezoning, the plats will be submitted, or a plat will be submitted to the planning office. That plat will show that it has met TDEX regulations and it will have a list of the lots in that subdivision and what the bedroom capacity is for each individual lot. That's a minimum.
I think we have a member of the public that would like to either ask a question or a comment. Any objection to recognizing a public member?
I may recogina them.
Okay. Yes, sir. Would you come, just to help us out on far as everybody being able, if you'll come to the microphone, please. Were you at the public hearing?
I was, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay.
Glad, you know, it would have been, no, not criticizing y'all, we all have...
Okay, just state your name.
My name's Eric Dell. The public here was great, I appreciate the time to talk. I noticed a lot of the commissioners wasn't here to hear any of our concerns with this. And as far as the concerns of a good reason to vote against any of this, the planning and zoning commission is to help protect property value, correct? All of the property value around this new subdivision, nothing against Mr. Bigum personally, I don't know him, but I do know his neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods that he builds is going to devalue all of the surrounding property values. Now, I do know that there's properties out there that are $200,000 and $300,000 houses, one just sold for $272,000 sitting on 10 acres, almost across the street from this property. Now, if you build 16, 17, 20, 50, 60, 70,000 dollar houses, what is that going to do to the property value? The whole point of the planning and zoning commission, even stated on the main page, is to help protect the community and the property values of the surrounding area. Now, if you approve to have more cheap houses built, you're, all you're doing is devaluing the property value that's already there. Now, the only reason I raised my hand is because she said that you had to have a good reason to vote against it. Well, if you're protecting the property value, then voting against more houses versus less. Now, I don't know what the process will be, I'm not the landowner, but can the neighboring community, can we vote to have this lot voted strictly agriculture instead of A1 to let Mr. Bigum grow row crop like everybody else out there?
It already is.
Oh, can we not vote strictly agriculture or does it have to be like one house per property?
It has to be A1.
Okay. Well, I guess no hope in that. So, all I ask is if 16 is the minimum that we can have built out there, please keep it at 16. Y'all wasn't here when we talked about, there's no speed limit signs on this road, that part of Limestone Road. The part of Limestone Road needs to be repaved. In front of my house personally, there's been at least five wrecks in the last two years. You know, we've already got a traffic issue out there with people speeding and, you know, Mr. The mayor, the sheriff is sitting back here. Oh, sorry, you've moved on me. You know, I don't know if y'all know much about this, that area out there, but we already have a drug issue. There's plenty of drug issues out there. I can't speak to the type of people. I know there's good people that live in his properties, I've talked to some of them. And I also know that there's not good people that live in these properties. If you're adding a contamination to an already contaminated area, you're making it worse. Now, I don't have a vote here, but that's my piece, that's all I can say.
Any questions? Okay. Is there objection to another member from the public addressing the commission? One of the reasons we're doing this because you're correct, there's a lot of commissioners that have reasons they can't be here earlier than the six o'clock and sometimes we do need to hear the public. You're welcome. Yes, sir. State your name, please.
I'm Don Robinson. I live right across the road from this property. Is all the property in...
A little closer to the mic.
Is all the property in the county zoned A1?
Yes.
City property? Does city property is not just county property?
The county has many different zonings, A1, A2, commercial, industrial.
Oh, how long is this property? Is it forever been zoned the way it is?
The zoning map was adopted in 2013, I think is the official date on the zoning map.
Okay, then it's changed since 2003.
There was no zoning in 2003.
That's what I thought. Because I bought this property in 2003 and it was zoned, at that time, just A, no zoning?
There was no zoning.
Okay, then you could build on it or not build on it, but what you're saying? And he can build, the contractor can build how many houses right now if it, the way it stays?
The maximum number now would be one. A lot size would have to be one acre. Now, depending on a lot of other things, roads, septic systems, a lot of things enter the total number that he can build, but his lot size has to be at least an acre the way it's zoned now.
That was my next question, is half of this property or a third of this property, is all the property going to be, what kind of sewer system?
Okay, soil scientists or environmentalists determines that. They will have a surveyor engineer design a road system and lots. Then they will perk those lots to see if the number of bedrooms that will fit on any individual lot, it's based on the number of bedrooms. You may have a lot that could only have a two-bedroom home on it, you may have another one that could have a four-bedroom because the soil perks or leaches lets the water leach out in it quicker.
Okay. Because a third of this property floods already.
And all of that will be determined later. It doesn't affect what's being done now or proposed being done.
How do you find out? Is there some special way that you find out how property is being sold in Lincoln County?
Yes, sir. You can go to the property assessor's office, he keeps a record of that.
A property assessor?
Yes, sir, Paul Braden.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else from the commission? What's the will of the commission on this item? That's what I'm asking for.
Move approved, Chairman.
Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion that it be approved. Commissioner Brown seconds it. Floor is now open for discussion from the commission only. Let's electronically vote on this item. A yes vote is to approve the change from A1 to A2. Is that correct, Ms. Nancy? Proposing change to A2?
Yes, sir, from A1 to A2.
I have nine ayes, 12 no, three absent.
Okay. The motion to change fails, it will remain as A1. Why don't we go in and get your other two items, Ms. Nancy? Let's go on up to one and then do two.
So, item one would be the property maintenance. To summarize this, the timeline for this proposal, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval at their June 6th meeting for the property maintenance that you have on your staff report in your packets. This commission called for the public hearing on June 18th to be held tonight. Public hearing was heard. This proposal is a result of the planning commission weighing several options for several months. We sought input from both the community and this legislative body to work together to arrive at a best solution. Zoning resolutions are a fine line that unfortunately can't satisfy all parties involved. That's just not the nature of it. But I feel that the proposal that you have in your staff or on the staff report in your packets considers many of the aspects that we encountered and it provides for a reasonable result. The goal of the planning and zoning office is to work with people to gain a happy medium in compliance. With our limitations, we do not have the staff nor would we go looking for violations. These are strictly what are called into us. So, what you have before you is a proposal for litter and inoperable vehicles.
What was the result of the public hearing?
Property maintenance, we had two people in support of it and one kind of borderline in support of it.
Okay.
I'll say the same thing again in a minute.
We have a lot of, a lot of energized people in support, not necessarily tonight here, but my office is inundated with it.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make it be approved, Chairman.
Commissioner Douglas makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Gillan. I'll catch you next time, Commissioner Dean. Thank you.
I might agree next time.
Any questions on this item?
Do you have a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bryant?
It's basically the same comment I made in the public hearing if you were here. Back when we started zoning and back in the day, our goal was to provide, or my goal, I shouldn't say our goal, my goal was to provide sufficient housing and that those houses be built to a certain standard. The zoning office has done a great job of doing that. We've now got a set of guidelines, your house is getting inspected this many times, that kind of, that was my goal. I do believe, and nobody like, and I listen to these fine folks, there's some garbage around and there's some old trucks around and there's things out there that are sometime unsightly, but it, me personally, you start down a very, very slippery slope when you tell a citizen that they can't do this on their property. My take on that is, is the city of Fayetteville has those kind of regulations and if you don't want that to happen, you know, I think most people would say, that I've talked to would say move to town. And that's kind of what I believe. You know, we got farmers out there that got a truck, I talked to one today. He's, it's a fencing vehicle and it starts once a year and somebody might inadvertently turn him in. He actually uses it, doesn't have a tag, it never leaves the farm and you got to work on it every time to start it. So, if somebody turns him in, it's not covered, it's not behind the shed, it's not any of those things, it's not going to meet the criteria unless he comes up here and buys a tag for it. Or, you know, it's just the way it is. And, you know, garbage, we got some garbage out there. And I understand the zoning office's complex problem in that, I think if I've heard right, you got like 100 phone calls, literally, 200 or a bunch of phone calls. There's been a lot of calls about this kind of stuff. The other side of that from my chair is though, that there's some 30,000 people living in the county of Lincoln. And if you get 1,000 calls, then that means that 32,000 people didn't call you. So, I kind of look at it that way, you know, because I think, you know, a lot of us, and me, I'll say for me, you know, I own the land that I own and I want to be able to do what I want to do on it within reason. And, you know, and I think we get down that slope. Not that I don't think it's a good idea, but the example I used, I think in the public hearing was, you know, I've got a brick home and I've got a metal shop sitting beside it. Well, at some point, it may not be in my lifetime or our lifetime, but at some point, I don't want somebody to tell me I've got to build a brick facade on the front of my shop just because my house is brick. I own that property, I want to build whatever kind of shop I want. So, I think, you know, as we've come so far and done some good things, but I think we can hit that slope to where we go downhill quickly and not do what the majority of the people want. Because if you get 1,000 calls on something, you got 32,000 that didn't call. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other? Commissioner Thor is recognized.
Believe it or not, I agree with Commissioner Bryant. But, you know, this is exactly the reason I was hesitant about voting for zoning to start with is heading down this path. You know, it started out, it was supposed to be for this and now it's, every time you come up, you know, and I appreciate what you do, but, you know, this, you're right, it's not going to make everybody happy. We're making a few handful of folks happy and taking away rights from everybody else is the way I look at it. And, you know, I've got some energized folks in District 2 that they would hang me from a tree if I ever voted for something like this. So, I mean, we're just taking away rights from citizens of this community is the way I look at it. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? We do not have a motion yet, is that correct? We do have a motion in a second.
In a second.
Okay, all righty. Y'all ready to vote?
I'd ask that you explain how the vote will be, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A yes vote will be implementing the maintenance action. A no vote, we would be back to where we are now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, you're welcome. This time if you would vote. Madam Clerk?
Nine ayes, 12 no.
Okay. The motion fails. We do not have a property maintenance ordinance in place at this time. Ms. Nancy, number two, please.
Number two and the last one is a proposed amendment to the zoning resolution. This amendment is for Article 7, administration and enforcement. This amendment is for Article 7 Administration and Enforcement, Section 7.030H Building Codes. There are two, two steps in this one. The first one is to remove the 2018 Energy Efficiency Tables and replace them with the 2009 Tables. And by doing so, it allows an alternate method to meet the energy code that is less costly for the builders. This alternate method is sanctioned by the state as being acceptable. That was number one. The second proposal is to lost my place. Is to, is to include within the 2018 Residential Code, Chapter 4 Foundations, to include seismic area B. And what this does, it allows for rebar and metal fiber to be placed in the footer, puddings. The majority of builders are already exercising this method. Planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed amendment at their June 6 meeting. This commission called for the public hearing on June 18, which was held tonight. Had no, no comments on this during the public hearing.
No comments from the public hearing?
Concur, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion concurred by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Jean. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. All right. Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Next, we move up to, we need acknowledgement of receipt motion on the delinquent tax list. Do I have a motion of acknowledgement that you received that? Commissioner Mitchell makes that motion. Commissioner Brown seconds it. All those in favor of showing receipt of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Next item. Next item's consideration for approval to elect Anita Johnson as the county representative to the library board. That term would expire June 2022. Alex Boyce declined to serve another term on that. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes that motion. Commissioner Thorpe seconds it. Any questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to elect Paul Braden to the planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Sue Welch. That term would expire May of 2021. What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Bradford makes motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of approving that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. If I'm not wrong, we're ready for the budget committee. Commissioner Ogle?
Budget Committee Meeting Report for the July 16, 2019 Regular Session of Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee Chairman Steve Graham conducted a public hearing on the fiscal year 2019. 2020 Lincoln County Proposed Budget on July 2, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the Courthouse Basement Courtroom. After closure of the public hearing, the Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, may present to due notice in the Courthouse Basement Courtroom on July 2, 2019, immediately after the public hearing. Members present, Steve Graham, Shirley Dangerfield, Grady Davis, Donnie Ogle, Kate Ewing, Randy Bradford, Ricky Bryant. Members absent was Doug Cunningham. Others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner Ronald Jean, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Jack Ashley, Commissioner Charles Hunter, and Commissioner Darren Holland. Item one. County Mayor Newman stated he had a meeting scheduled with Sarah McLeod from the South Central Tennessee Development District on July 24. She will be at the West Market School to see if there is any grant opportunities for this building. Number two. Lincoln County Health Systems. Fiscal Year 1920 Budget included in previous month's packets. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Ogle, to recommend approval of the attached fiscal year 1920 proposed budget for the Lincoln Health System. The motion was lost with a vote of three yes, four no.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Almighty quiet. We would need a motion. A motion to concur would be disapproving their budget. You could make a motion to approve their budget, so. The motion has been made to approve the health system budget, seconded by Commissioner Thorpe. Any discussion on this item? Commissioner Douglas, you have a comment? Okay. Alrighty.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Ogle.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the commission, I can, I can certainly understand the frustrations that you have about the health system budget. I've had a lot of frustrations about it myself. Back when we were elected to the health system or appointed to the health system, I think it was me, Anthony Taylor, Sharon U. Banks, and Ben? Ben, I thought, I forgot you. But anyway, that was, that was the four that was elected. And we were the only commissioners that, at that time, that had started on a, on a board that there was no other commissioners before us that were still there. We were all new. Now, Dr. Barnes was also on the commission, on the board. And he was graciously stayed with us long enough to, for us to get our feet wet a little bit. But our health system has lost a lot of money over the past 10 years. But actually, they lost money before that. But, and we realized when we were appointed to that committee that we had a problem. And we had, we had to start working on that problem. And we did. We got, we got to work on it as quickly as we could. We attended a lot of long hours, meetings, late at night, trying to, to see where we could cut or what we could do to, to get the health system back in the black. Well, the thing that we, the thing that we've learned is that we, we lost money because of a lot of the capital projects we had to, had to take care of. We, we hired a CEO that just looked like was bound and determined to break us. And Ben Brown was acting chairman that night. That we decided we didn't need him anymore. And Phil Malone was the deputy that was there that, that came in and escorted him out. Now, we've made some hard decisions. This board has made some hard decisions trying to get things back in, in order. We've cut, I guess we've, at least I think we've probably cut about as much as we can cut. But we've cut 111 employees in the last 18 months. Now, that was a hard decision to make. And it was something that I didn't take any pleasure in at all. It hurt me to have to, but we had to get back or try to get our budget back to where we could, we could start making money again. And I don't know if we're there yet or not. I don't know. But, you know, it's a the commissioners don't seem to think that that not having a budget has affected the, the employees of our, of our system. But it has. They're not sure of where they stand as far as their job is concerned. And a vote to approve our budget would just, I think, would be something that they could maybe hang their hat on as a little security. Now, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make some more tough decisions. And I've been asked more than one time, what are we gonna do if we're three months from now or six months from now? And we don't see that, that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to pull this thing out? Well, I don't know what the answer to that is. Of course, we, I've, I've thought in my mind that we, we might want to bring it under the umbrella of the county and, and under the 81 Act and just see if we could make it work under those circumstances. But the one thing it's gonna take for this, for us to make it, and that is for the public to use our facility. That's what it's gonna take. Without, without us having the support of our community, we're not gonna make it. I don't know how any planner to put it. But I use that facility myself. I may go somewhere else, but I start up here. And I start up here every time. Now, but they may care me somewhere else and they have before. But, but I think the only way that we're gonna, we're gonna make it is to have the support of the community. And one thing that could help, that I think the, the, getting the support of the community is by passing this budget. Everybody's a little bit, they're concerned about what's going on. And we've made some hard decisions and, and I think it's time we, we went ahead and approved our budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogle. Any other? Yes, sir. We recognize Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
First off, I want to thank our commissioners that's on the board. Thank you for your hard work that you put in. But from the budget that I looked at, there's 5% to 10% per line item. We can't keep the same budget and expect different results. We've got to have a change. We've got to go back and do harder work and get this squared away. We have a problem there. We've lost $6 million in two years. We have a problem and we need to fix it. And it needs our utmost attention to it. Thank you, that's all I've got to say about it.
Anyone else? Commissioner Thorpe is recognized.
Just one comment. The, the proposed budget is $3.8 million in cuts. Just to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Commissioner Bryant is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wouldn't want to say anything, but I think I will now. I, I agree. I've used the facility we have up there, I've used it this year and had good results. My problem is, and I think, and I think Commissioner Ogle hit it right on the head a while ago, we've got to, we've got to get our community to trust in our hospital again and using the hospital. I could come up with numerous things that I've been told lately. I've talked to, I don't know how many people that work up there. And I think our board is doing everything they can possibly do. The director of the board, the chairman of the board stays out there. I know he does. He's working 40 hour week and not getting paid a dime for it and I appreciate that. But we've got to build that trust back up. I agree that, you know, some, some of the employees may feel a little better if we pass the budget. But the flip side of that is, is what's changed? You know, in the, in the last couple of, three years, we have been told, everybody that sits on the budget committee and the commission ultimately, have been told that we're gonna do this, we're gonna make this much money this year. And I'm not gonna put any numbers out there because I might get them wrong. But for the past three years, we got, we're gonna fix this. We got it, it's under control. You know, well, it's not. And it hadn't been. And that's my problem is that, you know, why, what's different now? What is different now? You know, and I think we've got a trust issue and, and actually, we've got an ad hoc committee set up. And that committee, at their last meeting, decided to wait on the results from the Navigant, I think I'm saying that right, survey, before we move forward. But there, there are some companies out there that the ad hoc committee may or may not be considering, depending on what the results are of this particular survey, that, that deal directly with community involvement, community trust issues, employee involvement, employee trust. They specialize in these kind of things. And it's not a, it's not a long process. I talked to the president of that particular company, or the one that I've talked to for about an hour and a half on the phone a couple of weeks ago. And he says it's not overnight. The survey they do would take through, probably three to four months to complete, to get some results that would, he, in his mind, would be usable to what, what do we have to do to get that, those, those factors built back up? We won't have a money problem if people start using the hospital. If you use the hospital, money's gonna be there. But if you ship all your money to somewhere else and you don't get anything but maybe the ER call and the ambulance run, you're gonna lose money. If you don't have a surgeon full time, and that's not, I know it's tough, we ain't got but one. He can't be on call all the time. Well, we don't have a Dr. Cobb anymore that would, you know, he's on call 24/7. I don't think anybody can stand to do that anymore. But, you know, we've got to do something because we're losing operations like appendix, which is generally a simple operation to another hospital just because we don't have somebody to come in and do it. It's just that simple. And you're never gonna make any money if you ship those outside. And it's kind of like going to the parts house. I, I deal in parts. If I go to the parts house two, three times and they don't have the part I'm looking for, then I'm not gonna go back because I'm wasting my time. And I think we've got to get over that mentality as a community. You know, if I go there a couple, three times and they have to send me somewhere else because I don't have, the, the service that I need is not provided there, then how can we expect them to come back? So I think we have to do these surveys, do these things, find what those answers are, get that trust factor built back up with our community, get our community, I agree, get our community using our facility again. And then, you know, and our employees, all that trust will come back. But I think we've got to do something. And I don't know that not passing a budget or passing a budget is, means much up there. But the fact of the matter is, I think for me, it's just a flag that we need to do something. And what we're doing is not working. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone?
The budget as it was submitted this past year is a statement that we are doing something. We have been doing something. Some of the plans that have been put in just did not materialize. Our recruiting is another area that we've been having difficulties to try to get physicians to relocate toward a remote area. We on the right track. And we're gonna turn this thing around. But there's a lot of things that people don't understand. When you have regulations, you have, when you get eight cent on a dollar, 13 cent on a dollar, 20 cent on a dollar, it's hard to make ends meet. So, with, this legislation that's coming into place in October, hopefully it will be passed, that will more levelize the plan field. And once those plan fields are levelized, then I think you're gonna see a marked improvement. We just had a joint commission visit and it was in the paper tonight. And we passed again, we got another three-year period. And they were complimenting us on some of the best practices that we have. And this, this process, we're working this process. We're gonna make sure this thing, that all the strength that we have, we turn this thing around. And rural hospitals do not make money. Rural hospitals do not make money. Rural hospitals do not make money. We're trying to make sure that we have processes in place to be able to continue to sustain ourselves. We have a good system out there. People go out there and get good care. They get good care. We're not gonna do open heart surgery. And we're gonna do what we can to stabilize that person to get on where they, where they, where they can go. But if there's something we can do, we do it good. And I raise the question.
Okay. Question's been called for. Any objections to a vote? Not, please electronically vote at this time. Not, please electronically vote at this time. Madam Clerk?
I have 11 ayes, nine no.
Okay.
Three absent, and one abstention.
Okay. The budget has not passed again. Mr. Commissioner Ogle.
Item three. Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A. State forms CT-0253 school chrome book leases approved in May of 2019. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed seven yes, one absent, to acknowledge receipt of the attached state form CT-0253 for the school chrome book leases approved at the May commission meeting.
Okay. I would entertain a motion acknowledging the receipt of those. They should have been in your packet following one page over from that.
Make the motion, please.
Commissioner Bradford makes motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Holland makes a second. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of the receipt of that acknowledgement, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, receipt of that. Commissioner Ogle.
General Fund Budget Amendment. There was two of them. One of them was for $1,400. Is an amendment to record revenues and expenditures for $1,400 received in prior year from leadership Lincoln to be used to aid the archives. Number two was for $4,500. Is an amendment to record revenue and contributions of proceeds of the 1983 GMC Rescue 4x4 to the Boones Hill Fire Station, previously recommended by the Fire EMA Committee and approved by the commission to surplus.
What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Spray makes a motion, receipt of that. Commissioner Ewing seconds. Any questions? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
C. Financial Reports. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Davis, passed seven yes, one absent, to acknowledge receipt of the enclosed financial reports.
Would entertain a motion of the receipt of those. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. All those in favor acknowledging receipt of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Commissioner Ogle.
Item four. Fiscal year 1920 final budget approval. First one's the appropriation resolution.
You're not gonna read all that, are you?
I'm gonna read part of it, yeah.
I think everybody's reviewed it. Does someone want it to be read? I don't wanna cut you off, Commissioner Ogle, but...
I was gonna read the first part, about it being a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Lincoln County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2019, and then I was gonna read the funds.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving that we read what's there in our budget back.
That Commissioner Ogle does read that, proceed. Commissioner Ogle.
Let me get back to it.
Sorry.
Appropriation Resolution. Motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Lincoln County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020.
Move it through.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Ewing. Was that correct? Okay. Any questions on the appropriation resolution to this year's budget? Let's do electronic vote on this item, please. Madam Clerk?
I have 19 ayes, two no.
Okay.
And three absent.
The appropriation resolution passes. Commissioner Ogle.
Tax Levy Resolution. I'm gonna read it, because it's got the...
Go ahead.
The figures in it. I'm sorry it takes me a minute to get to it, but it's... Resolution fixing the tax levy in Lincoln County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2019. The funds are General Fund, 0.9033, Highway Public Works, .1453, General Purpose Schools, .6681, General Debt Service, .3344, Education Capital Projects, .0509, for a tax rate of 2.1020.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move it through, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cunningham makes that motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. Any questions on our tax levy resolution? All those, if you would, electronically vote on this item also. Madam Clerk?
21 ayes, three absent.
Okay. Tax Levy Resolution passes. Commissioner Ogle. What's the will of the commission on this item?
You don't want me to read it? I mean, I'm not reading it for the benefit of the commission. I'm reading it for the benefit of the community.
I don't wanna cut you short either, but I, do y'all want it to be more read than... What's the will of the commission? We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, approval. Commissioner Brown, no.
I didn't have a motion yet.
They just made it.
Okay.
And seconded by Commissioner Brown.
Okay.
Any discussion on the nonprofit appropriations? If not, if you electronically vote, it is printed, please. Madam Clerk?
I have 21 ayes.
21 ayes.
And absent.
That motion passes also for the nonprofit appropriations. Commissioner Ogle.
Item five. There being no further business to be presented, had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed to adjourn. Respectfully submitted to the July 2019 regular session of the County Legislative Body. Steve Graham, Chairman. Donnie Ogle, Secretary. Cole Bradford, Recording Secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think we're ready for our notary publics. Madam Clerk?
Suzie W. Clevinger by Commissioner Ogle, Jeffrey McWilliams by Commissioner Brown, Bernadette Self by Commissioner Brown, Mrs. Bill Stovall by Commissioner Cunningham, and Jeanette G. Counts by Commissioner Holland.
Okay. Any additions we need to add to that? Entertain a motion for those approved, please. Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Holland seconds. Any discussion on any of those names? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. They all are approved. A motion to adjourn would be in order at this time. Commissioner... All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We're adjourned.